We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well told.
This is Quon Causen.
Present.
Mr. Sterling.
Present.
Mrs. Snyder.
Mr. Shaner.
Present.
Mrs. Colton.
Mrs. Ralph.
Present.
Dr. Holter.
Present.
Mrs. Milander.
Present.
Mrs. Kammer.
Present.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, when we, as we get started this morning, we, or this afternoon, we will start this evening, whatever day it is. We'll start with our student representative report.
Hi, so, um, Student Council, we're preparing for our Powderpuff game, which will be held, I believe, next Friday at 7:00 PM. It's juniors versus seniors. It's gonna be a lot of fun, and we have that in the evening, so a lot of parents and stuff really get involved. Um, we had prom at Lobby Hall on the 25th. It was, it was a blast. And then, the senior trip will be held at the end of the month. AP testing began last week, and it's wrapping up Friday. Um, Keystone's will wrap up again next week. And then, FCA sponsored a dodgeball tournament last Friday, and the winners got a $250 Buffalo Wild Wings gift card, so that was a lot of fun. Um, elementary schools will be hosting the Junior Olympics on Friday down at the high school, so that gets the elementary kids involved a little bit, and their field days are coming up as well to wrap up the end of the year, so that'll be a lot of fun. And that's all I had, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, May is certainly busy. Um, next we have our construction update.
Hi, if you haven't met me, I'm Don Pasquinelli. I took over for Russ. I'm the field superintendent of the project. Uh, at this point, we're getting towards the end of our demolition structural steel work. Uh, it got pretty complicated trying to support the roof, taking out the walls we had to take out and put in the structural steel. So that's coming to an end. They're gonna start working on the main entrance of the school next. Uh, the drywall and metal studs is pretty much complete in Area A in the classrooms. Uh, it's taped and finished. There's a coat of paint on it. Uh, we're moving into the cafeteria area now and, uh, working on the gym area. Most of the plumbing mechanical systems are roughed in and complete. Boiler room work is complete, and we're also, uh, electrical and heating system, it's about 50 to 80 percent. Uh, all in all, the project's going pretty well, and we should have a good schedule update for you here in the next week. Some of those pictures are some of the framing in the shop area. As we move through, those are the corridors. You'll see the recesses for the lockers. That's the Area A. It looks like the first floor. That's some of the steel we had to put in to support the new entrance. Uh, you'd be surprised how many masonry walls we had to remove in that school. Uh, but, uh, we hold the roof joists up and we install the steel. That's the section of the learning lab on the right there. Uh, and those, uh, little cubbies will have glass fronts on them. Uh, that is a section of the gym. Back wall of the gym we removed. Now, that'll get framed up with metal studs. There'll be three windows across there, and that'll illuminate the, uh, new cafeteria. Uh, some more of the drywall and classroom work. Uh, oh, I forgot about the roof. Uh, we are continuing with the roof also. Uh, this is a section over the old shop area. Uh, Mother Nature has not been kind to us lately, uh, but we're progressing, uh, as best we can with the weather we get. Any questions or any?
Hey, Don, uh, sorry to put you on the spot, and Jason's not here, so it's his fault. The schedule that you're talking about, that's the detailed schedule with the tasks, with the start and finish, uh, projected, with finish time on it.
That's correct.
We were supposed to get one in April.
Okay.
And we didn't. Not that I'm aware of.
The one-
Is there a good chance we can see one in May?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, the one in April, we're, we're working on, uh, putting our comments on it. When we do an update, we take each one of your four primes, get their information, and have, uh, Licarius put it into that main schedule. When we received the one last month, it needed some work, so, uh, I know that, uh, Jason's a high priority to get that thing together and get it to you.
Yeah, I, I've done the schedules, and no matter what, you're always behind the eight ball on it.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to see at least something, if that's possible.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm Craig Collins with Access. Remember me? But, um, there are some change orders that we want to go through. Can we go to that sheet there?
You want the change order sheet?
Uh, keep moving through. I think it's a- Not sure of the page number. On his documents, page six.
There you go.
Okay, that's it, yeah. So, um, we have change orders from two of the contractors, and the first one is a combined grouping of change orders for Licarius, and I'll just take you briefly through those. Uh, the total value of all of these is $30,410. First one is for modification of the gymnasium padding, uh, fastening system. Do they have the value on there? Is that three?
Three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five. So it's pretty minor there. It's just a, a different way that they are fastening the, the padding to the wall to make it concealed instead of exposed fasteners. Um, the, uh, ad for structural steel stud sizes at the high school, um, cafeteria wall, uh, that's that opening that you saw that they had, uh, where the gym wall was removed. Uh, because the, the, um, existing conditions were a little different than we anticipated, they had to add, uh, uh, add a little bit of, uh, a larger stud size for that, so that's what that, that amount is for. Uh, number three is to, uh, provide the work to complete the plaster patching at four locations. Those are in, uh, existing classrooms where there was a, um, Don, is that where they had the, uh, teachers', um, storage rooms?
Built-in casework was against the wall when we removed it, there was any plaster behind it. And, uh, documents, they expected plaster behind it, so we had to, uh, fill that all in.
So they, uh, yeah, they patched that in, and, um, again, not a, not a huge cost there. Additional work to provide, or I'm sorry, to remove the existing plaster in corridors A-115 and A-141. Uh, that condition was also something that, in order to make a smoother transition in the corridors to the existing plaster, where we're laminating drywall over adjacent brick, um, it just made sense to remove that existing plaster, so that everything's, uh, smooth as you look down that hallway. Number five is additional work to, uh, complete the emergency door opening repair, uh, for the structural support. Um, these are, these were unforeseen conditions above the existing ceilings for two doors in the, um, near the family consumer science and art rooms. Uh, when they opened it up, there were no, uh, lintels to support the masonry above, so we had to, had to, uh, put new steel in there. Item six, uh, to provide the work, um, time and materials to complete additional front entry steel demolition, and that's, um, one of the pictures that you saw up there was, um, to clear out existing steel and decking that was not indicated on our drawing, so that was, uh, actually an omission on our part. Um, not a, not too major a cost there. Um, number seven, add to provide the work of remove the existing ceramic tile in Wayne, and Wayne's coating in Area C restrooms. There was existing tile on those restrooms that, um, they needed to remove in order to get, um, the new finished surface on the walls. Item eight, um, provide, uh, work to complete the unforeseen existing pilaster in the old ceiling condition. That was also in the family consumer science and art rooms where, above the ceiling, they had a, uh, a very rough transition of the plaster to the block, and since we're opening the ceilings in there, we wanted to have a nice clean edge up there, and that's to, that's to, um, afford that to happen. Number nine is to provide a keyed lockout on the elevator, so that right now, we had, uh, the elevator with just a, um, um, a, um, open-close situation, and now we'll have a lock on the door so that students can't use that, um, without supervision. So those are combined for Licarius, and then there is one other one for the electrician. They, as they were digging the new main, uh, conduit into the building for the electrical line, they ran into a good bit of rock, um, not too far under the surface of the, uh, the grade, and, uh, this change order is to, an additional work to remove that rock, and the amount there is fourteen to, what's that, fourteen to-
Two hundred ninety-five.
Two hundred ninety-five, so. And that one, I know, uh, Dr. Lor and, uh, PJ Dick vetted that cost pretty, uh, pretty well, and got them down to the lowest, uh, lowest number they could. So we'll look for, um, approval of those change orders this week.
Craig, on, on these change orders, I know, again, Jason is on vacation, and he does this spreadsheet.
Yeah.
And none of these are on the spreadsheet.
Oh, I was not aware of that.
Okay, so, and the nice thing about this spreadsheet, it gives us the total. Well, we're talking about thirty thousand on one sheet and fourteen thousand.
Yep.
You know, on this sheet, um, I'm trying to look here, two hundred fifty-two thousand?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that number's starting to creep up, and we want to watch that. So, if we can have this sheet updated, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll get that done. But I will say, overall, um, I think without, with unforeseen conditions and, and omission items, which there are very few, we're still doing very well for, for being more than halfway through the project. I think we're less than one percent on the, uh, construction costs, and I think we had, uh, I think Jason said we had about three to five percent contingency built into the, into the cost, so, um-
Yeah, I'm not criticizing the-
No, no, I'm just-
Change orders.
For everybody's benefit, we're, we're, I think we're in pretty good shape on change orders, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And as, I just have a question. As we go through, are, are we kind of getting out of the unforeseen things?
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point. And Don might be able to speak to that, but I would say that we're, we're on the very tail end of, of finding unforeseen items here, so.
Yeah, we're, we're almost, uh, once we get through the demolition, the structural, now we're into finishes and casework.
I mean, the plumbing, HVAC, and electrical does most, to the, for the most extent, are ninety percent complete, you know, with the, with the guts of the building, so there's, um, there won't be many surprises on that end.
Are you all the ones that handle the doors? Because I, I think there were some things going on with doors.
Sure. We, we are looking at, um, access control for the entire school. Um, and, and Dr. Lor may have mentioned that, you know, we have, in the contract, we have all of the exterior doors covered, uh, for door access control. That was done during the design. What we're looking at now is, uh, possibly adding door access control to interior doors as well, classrooms, offices, um, faculty rooms and, and things of that, just to enhance, um, the, uh, the security of the building.
And was that accounted for in our, or would that be a change order? Is that additional?
That would be a change order, yes, yep.
That's not a change order, right? That, that would be soft money. That, that's money that wasn't in the contract.
That's correct, right.
So it's not a change order in this sense, in that sense.
Right, you're right.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
No, Craig, just a, a point to, to Mr. Sch, uh, Mr. Shaner's, but that, that document with the change orders reflects through five-seven, so after, if, if this board chooses to approve those change orders, that would be reflected on that sheet, Rick, is that-
That's correct.
Yep.
I believe Jason waits until you put that up to the sheet.
Thank you.
Uh, other, any other questions for that? So we met last week, last Wednesday, um, and, uh, Mr. Liberto gave a, a budget presentation, uh, last Wednesday, and so I asked Rick if he would, um, maybe recap it for folks who weren't able to make the budget meeting, just to kind of give a lay of the answer, Rick, I'll, if there's something you want me to bring up, I'd be happy to.
No, right now, so, yeah, so we met May 7th. Uh, the board held its twenty-five, twenty-six budget hearing, um, so there was a lot of discussion, good discussion around, you know, next year's budget, uh, increases to the budget. So, uh, if I can just go over some of the highlights and lowlights of, of, of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and, you know, we can open up the discussion, Madam President, if you'd like. So right now, the budget, as the budget stands today, we're looking at about a seventy-point four, seventy million, four hundred thousand dollar, uh, expense budget and a sixty-nine million, eight hundred thousand dollar revenue budget. So right now, the way the budget stands, is our expenditures are exceeding our revenue by about five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, some change. Um, our expenditures went up about two and a half percent, close to two and a half percent, and our revenue increased about one and a half percent. So right now, our budget, uh, has about forty-seven million dollars of salaries and benefits, which equates to about sixty-seven percent of the district's overall budget. There's about four categories in our budget that are fixed, that create about eighty-one percent of our budget, which is salary and benefits, transportation costs, debt service costs, utility costs. Uh, those costs are fixed, right? So we have no, no say in that, no wiggle room in that, and that's about eighty-one percent of our budget. So that gives us about nineteen percent of our budget that we have to, to play with. So, you know, some of the things that, you know, are included in next year's budget that, you know, are either new or increases, um, our Peasars increased by about five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Now, the rate of, for Peasars did not increase, which is the state, the state pension, for anybody that doesn't know what Peasars is. It's our state pension cost, which is mandated by the state, that we pay thirty-three point nine percent of everybody's salary in the district. So that cost went up about five hundred and fifteen thousand. Uh, healthcare costs, which is handed down to us from the US-Warner County Intermediate Unit, that went up nine percent. Again, a, a cost that we have no control over. Uh, that increased our budget by about a million dollars on the expenditure side. There's some added curriculum expenditures in next year's budget for science. There's some Chrome built into the budget for kindergarten and fourth graders, which is about five hundred Chromebooks, uh, for kindergarten and fourth grade. Uh, we're also including a additional school resource officer for one of our other buildings. Uh, that's in, is part of the expenditures. And then, a second year of a cycle for band and music for, uh, increase to purchase, you know, instruments and things that they've done without for, for quite a while. So, um, probably for about ten to fifteen years, and we're starting to replace that and get on a cycle so we can continue to replace it. So overall, again, our, you know, our expenditures went up about one point six million dollars from the prior year, or two point four-two percent. Again, our revenue, uh, is about, it, also on the expenditure side, before I, before I get into revenue, let me just talk a little bit too. We, you know, there was a whole long process of going through the budget. One of the things that we ended up having to do to kind of give Don to where we're at with the five hundred and seventy thousand dollar deficit, is we had to eliminate about eight hundred thousand dollars of operational costs for our maintenance department, which means our building upgrades, our building fixes, not what you just saw here, but just everyday fixes that happen in the building, whether it's a boiler, lighting, you know, paving, um, whatever it might be. We had to eliminate that to kind of whittle the budget down and eliminate some of our expenses. So that's, that's a huge hit to the district on, on buildings that are aging already, with about eight hundred thousand dollar, um, pool out of the budget. On the revenue side, we're at about six, like I said, sixty-nine million, eight hundred thousand. Out of that sixty-nine million, fifty-two percent of it is the state, um, funding, which is about, uh, um, thirty-six million, and then the other portion of that is, is, uh, forty-six percent of that sixty-nine million is local, which consists of real estate taxes, earned income tax, different taxes throughout the, throughout the community. We did receive a small increase, not a small, but a, a middle-sized increase compared to what we've received in the past from the state. We received about eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars of state revenue increase. That kind of just offset maybe some of the, some of those expenses I just said that went up, whether it's the healthcare or the pension costs, it kind of just offset some of those increases. So, some of the things that, you know, that we're struggling with is, you know, over, from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-three, the district was kind of like flat with their taxes. The, the taxes went up a little bit based on assessed values going up, but there was never really an increase in taxes, and now we're starting to struggle with trying to make up for some of that lost revenue from those years of, of the COVID years. So now it's just, you know, kind of trying to figure out what we're gonna do here in the district as far as, you know, trying to offset those expenditures that went up and trying to justify, you know, whether it's a small tax increase or no tax increase, um, across the board for the district. But, right now, as it stands, you know, we proposed last week, on Monday, on the, on the seventh, we proposed a two and a half, a two percent to a three and a half percent tax increase, um, for, for the district, which equates to about seven hundred thousand dollars. So it kind of gives us about a two hundred thousand dollar wiggle room in next year's budget. So a little bit less than a one percent of the budget, you know, wiggle room, so.
Rick, I hate to add, uh, Mr. Liberto, um, can you talk quickly about the general fund, where we stand, and the percentage we need to maintain in that?
Fund balance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. So, the state require, doesn't require, but it recommends that the district, our size of the seventy million dollar budget, with the number of students and staff that we have, we operate with about an eight percent fund balance. So eight percent to us is just about five million dollars roughly, uh, five and a half million. Right now, we're operating at about six million dollars. So, if, you know, if everything stands the way it is today, and we end up, you know, having an unbalanced budget of that five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, that puts us under that eight percent threshold that the state recommends that we carry as far as a unassigned fund balance.
And there's also one other area, if, if you would like to mention it, about the risk of the federal funding. While it's very small, there is a number there that possibly upwards of two million dollars that could affect our budget and our fund.
Yeah, um, you know, we don't know for sure, like you said.
We don't know.
We don't know for sure, but there is, you know, some talk when the administration in Washington DC talked about eliminating the Federal Department of Education, um, how that would impact our, our federal program money, whether it's Title I, II, or, or IV. You know, there's that possibility that that money could go away or get shifted, and then the state would either have to pick up the burden, or the district would have to pick up the burden. That equates to about one point nine million dollars of funds for us if something would happen with that. The other side of that, which is not part of the general fund budget, but does have an impact on us here in the district, is the change, possible change in the way that food service gets funded from the federal government. There's talk about the way they're gonna change how they reimburse districts and how much they reimburse districts across the board for kids that are on free and reduced and, 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 uh, that type of meal program. So, there is some talk. Uh, I know Miss Mather went to a, a conference this week, and, and, and we haven't yet to even connect after that conference, so once we do, we'll have more information on that. But there is that possibility.
Thank you.
So I know you said there's just a small portion of money that we have any control over. Are there any pieces to that that we could tighten up? Any pieces of that that we could try to offset a little bit?
Well, yeah, so out of that, out of that nineteen percent, we did cut eight hundred thousand, which is the operation cost for, for maintenance, and it was a hundred percent split across the building fixes, you know.
We know that that's really not feasible, right?
Right, right.
I mean-
So, so we're one boiler away from not having enough money to fix it.
Exactly. And I think we all know what that's like in our own, you know, personal homes, to say, like, if something happens, yikes, what are we gonna do? And I feel that here.
Yeah, we're, 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 we're cutting that eight hundred thousand, coming off of a year that we increased that in our budgets to, to fix things and make things better in the buildings for the kids and stuff like that. So, now we just reverted back to, to eliminating that, unless, you know, we come up with some creative ways.
Now, can dropping below the fund, recommended fund balance affect our bond rates?
Yes, it could. So a couple of things. It'll, number one, uh, it'll affect your bond rating if you're below the eight percent, uh, if you start dipping into your fund balance, even if you weren't below the eight percent and you start dipping into your fund balance to balance your budget. But they also look at a, um, uh, what helps your, what helps your bond rating is the increases in taxes as well. Also, before, make mention of this, is that part of the budget does include an additional borrowing to finish the project and to take on any small renovation projects that we need to, if something would happen across the district. So there is, and that's, you know, that's already built into the budget.
Which we anticipated.
Which, correct, we anticipated. We, as we borrowed, we borrowed in steps, and we all, yeah, knew we had to borrow an additional fund to finish.
Are there any other plans besides a tax increase that could help us here? Or is that one of the only?
Unless, you know, so, one of the things that Dr. Lor and I have been hearing is that the state will not have a budget by the June 30th deadline, right? I think Ron agreed to that, which were required. The only thing that could happen that would offset any type of a tax increase is the state would turn around and say, hey, we're gonna give you more money, but that normally doesn't happen, right? So last year, they were gonna give us, you know, three million dollars, they cut it down to one point five. This year, they're telling us eight hundred and seventy thousand or eight hundred and seventeen thousand, and I'm hoping that that's where it stands, but, you know.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Okay, uh, we are, during this call, citizen comments are limited to three minutes. We request that your public comments focus on issues or policies and not people. Please state your name, community in which you reside, and the agenda item number you are addressing. Uh, we have one person, Roger Kreider.
Good evening. I'm Roger Kreider. I live in Washington Township. I'm addressing eleven point four, the preliminary real estate tax item on the agenda. I guess my question is for whoever can answer, what's the proposed tax increase? Like, how will that affect, like, the average household? What is that? What's the impact on that? Anybody know that?
Yeah.
Speak to that one.
Yeah, so usually we take all comments, and then we're gonna respond to you, but if you have, if there's anything else you have before you-
Well, I need that answered first, before-
Okay. Yeah.
You want me to display it?
Yeah.
Is that under the, under that agenda item?
Yes.
This one?
Yes. Yeah, so, if you kind of just look at the, the chart on the screen, um, so currently our, our millage rate for the twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, fiscal year for Westmoreland County is a hundred and six point six eight, Armstrong County is forty-one point five five. You know, with a, roughly a three and a half, three point three-five percent increase for Westmoreland County, it comes to, uh, the mill rate goes up to a hundred and ten mills, and for Armstrong County goes to forty-three point seven eight. Again, uh, because we're across two counties, there's that equalized mill factor that we have to take into consideration. It's, it's getting better. The state did do some legislation, I believe, Ron, to, to kind of equalize that a little bit more. Uh, in past years, when Westmoreland County's taxes would go up, Armstrong County taxes would sometimes go down. So now we're trying to equalize that, and it, and it's, it's getting better. You know, the increase, you see a five point three seven percent increase in Armstrong County, obviously that's a lot higher than Westmoreland, but the millage rate, um, is so much lower. But looking at that across the board, if you can just scroll. So it's kind of looking at, you know, different scenarios on different assessed values. If your house in Westmoreland and Armstrong are assessed at fifteen, uh, fifteen thousand dollar assessed value, with that increase up above that we talked about- that increase up above that we talked about, you're looking at about a $55, 50 tax increase for Westmoreland County. But keep in mind, one thing I did not mention prior was that we did get an increase in our state gaming revenue, the tax relief fund. So in the past, we've received about $1.7 million of tax relief. This year, we're receiving about two, almost 2.1 based upon the amount of money that people are spending at the casinos. So what happens then is we get that money, that money then comes back to the taxpayers and we are able to then reduce the tax bill for taxpayers knowing we're getting the money from the state. So with that taking, so it used to be that for this year, it was $226 per homestead, farmstead homeowner of money that they would receive as a refund or a reduction in their taxes. It goes up to $260 for next year. So it's a $34 increase that actually reduces people's taxes about, it's about 8,000 residents in Westmoreland and Armstrong County that'll have a tax reduction of about $260 as opposed to 226. So if you just look at that first one there, the assessed value, after the reduction of the homestead, farmstead, it goes up $21.50 for Westmoreland and actually somebody will get a 55 cent reduction in their taxes for Armstrong County, which equates to $1.79 per month. If you go to the purple one there, so the purple one is what we are, what we are told by the counties that is our average assessed value. So for Westmoreland County, the average assessed value of Westmoreland County is 18,140 and then Armstrong is 27,20. So as you can see, after the homestead, farmstead, Westmoreland goes up $33 a year and Armstrong County goes up $26.68 per year. And then you can just look at the different scenarios and if you kind of go to the worst-case scenario, the last one down there, $35,000 assessed value for both, Westmoreland goes up $95.50 a year after the refund and then $44 for Armstrong after the tax relief refund, or $7 a month, $3 a month. So that answers your question. So it's kind of the lower end value of assessed value to almost the higher end of those two counties.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
You can finish.
Well, my, my point is I feel like a small increase every year makes more sense than waiting two years, three years and saying, okay, let's increase this by, what'd you say, 2% to 3% this year? And waiting two or three years and then have to go 5% or 6%. I know there's a cap on that, you can only increase it by so much, but. So we don't want to cut programs. I'm sure things are getting more expensive. We don't want to cut arts, we don't want to cut athletics, we don't want to cut academics. I feel that's important to do those little increments over each year to get to offset things and make sure we're providing what we need for our kids.
Can I just comment on that? Yeah, so just, you're right, to your point though, there is a cap, right? So our cap this year is 5.5%. If we wait and we progress down the line of not raising taxes a little bit each year, you'll get to a point where you won't be able to raise them.
Can't raise enough, yeah.
And then you're behind the goal.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Repack, Solicitors' Report.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. You know, just, just two things, well, three things, I guess, to comment on what Mr. Roberto said, you know, we are, we are not hopeful that there's going to be a budget before June 30th from Harrisburg. And again, by code, we have to have a budget, so it is difficult for the board because we don't know when money's coming in, but yet you by law have to have a budget passed by June 30th. We have to have the preliminary budget approved and then displayed for 30 days. So that's kind of the timeline that we're looking at, why the board, one way or the other, has to approve preliminary budget because you have to put it out for 30 days so the public can view it and ask some questions about it. The other thing that I will say is the healthcare costs. I'm actually glad you should comment on that because again, we, you know, represent a bunch of different healthcare consortiums and I will tell you, I actually think that 9% may be the lowest one that I've heard lately. We have one that's up to 25% for a district that has had a devastating impact on their budget right now. So in fact, it sounds like your consortium's doing pretty well in that capacity. And then I just wanted to comment, I think last month I commented on that the OCR put out an attestation requiring us to sign off on it and I kind of explained the whole scenario there. I just want to let you know that there was three federal courts that actually struck that down. So they're still pending and still processing, but at this point in time, Kiski does not have to take any action whatsoever regarding the attestation. So I kind of went over it last time, I don't want to reiterate, but you know, just to give a glimpse of the school environment in one month, you know, we received, Dr. Lour received that communication on April 3rd that we had to respond by April 10th. On April 7th, we sent out a response. On April 10th, I believe, the state responded. On April 17th, we got a response back from the federal government and on April 24th, the court struck it down. So it just kind of shows you what's happening in the court system with the schools and that's just in the month of April right now. So again, we're pretty busy as it relates to education, education law. That's it, Madam President, thank you.
All right, thank you. Board Representative Reports. We will start with Northern Westmoreland Career and Technology Center. Mrs. Kammer?
We will, we will be reporting Monday. We have a meeting tomorrow night.
The Westmoreland County Intermediate Unit, is that right?
Yeah, we have a meeting May 27th at 7:00 PM. This Saturday, there is the WIU Foundation Spring Bingo Bash. It helps the foundation and supports the students. It starts at 12:30 PM at Rizzo's Event Center and you can still purchase tickets.
Thank you. Mrs. Kulikowski is not here for Pennsylvania School Board Legislative Council. The Kiski Area Education Foundation. Dr. Lour, did you want to update anything on the foundation?
Sure. The foundation, I don't know if I mentioned it last time, but we completed our innovative teacher grants that should be announced this month. We met and went through them. Again, they were, there were a lot of really good, really good project ideas and the committee met to, for student scholarships. There are several that the foundation gives out and there are some that they administer through that. So that process, I think there were 24 student applications. I got to see a little bit of one, the stuff down there, and I will say that the consensus in the room was that the little piece that I saw was indicative of all of the students, very well spoken, represented themselves well. I wanted to thank the high school and the counseling department of high school for getting that set up. It was, some of them were virtual, some of them I believe were also in person. So those will also be announced, though we just met yesterday to approve those. The Gulf Outing is solidified. There's going to be some, some more information sent out for that. It will be at Willowbrook in August. It's a Monday.
11/11.
The 11th, okay, so that's, yeah.
Rick sent it to me, I got it, I got it.
Okay. So we anticipate that's going to be filling up quickly, so you know, if you want to get a forceful together, we recommend you do that early. The Tile Project, we hit a little bit of a snag in terms of getting, getting somebody to install that. I believe we have somebody now. We're going to be looking at some prep work for that. Also, they, the, the committee yesterday, what was I going to say? Oh, we've talked about membership process, we're able to have up to 15 members on the board. So they've been doing a great job of actually getting a process together. We've had some interest in the past and didn't really have a process to get people over the, over the finish line. That has been completed for that. And then they acted on the wrestling room project yesterday to get them, I guess, over the finish line with $15,000. So that's, that's starting and on its way. And then I believe that Don Melior is going to be our designated for our Board Representative, Board Representative on the foundation. So everybody's excited and welcome aboard, Don, with that. So that concludes my report on the education foundation.
Yes, Don, I appreciate you stepping into that spot. I tried and it's just, you know, calendars get full, meetings happen on the same date. So I really appreciate that you have that availability and you'll do great at that. Any committee reports that we need to discuss is next. Any reports to the board? There are financial reports listed here. Any additional documents? If anyone has any questions regarding the monthly financial documents? We have the cash summary report as well. And then we will be asking for a motion to accept the school and department reports as well. So those are all listed. Although the schools provide us with really good reports of the exciting things happening in their buildings, so it's nice to take the time to click on those and see everything that's, that's going on.
Madam President.
Yes.
May I comment on those?
Yes.
These are worth mentioning so you know the administration knows. I read them, took a whole page of notes, but I'm not going to go through each one. But at the high school, the Key Club completed over 1,000 hours of volunteer time. Incredible. Yearbook won NSPA Pacemaker Award. Did I say that correct? Okay. Intermediate, they did a virtual tour after state training, which I thought I'd like to try that, is the train tour of six different cities. I may arrest to see what that's like, if anybody would invite me there. Math class did, prior to the testing, did the review of math through a survivor's game. Upper did spring band concert. They all had testing during that month. Tomorrow night, art show, if anybody can make it. My wife is making me go, not making, I'm going with my wife to the art show. Of course, we heard about the Junior Olympics already. Color run at, I believe, South, 150 participants earned over 21, almost $21,000. Kids of Steel, I remember they came and visited us that one time from North and we were talked about, that might have been a year or a year and a half ago, I forget, about trying to get that further across the district. And I see it's still at North. So maybe somewhere down the line, we can get them back in to talk to us and to talk about spreading that. East, you're not going to get away with it. I, my, my wife Cindy and I are on the PTO at East. We had the opportunity to participate in the bunny, bunny run. It was fantastic. In fact, those kids wore me out watching them. We had to watch them through the tracks. And the bunny, where the Easter bunny came from, I don't know, but that Easter bunny took time out and hopped the course, actually hopped the course. It was impressive. Thank you for all you do. I'm done.
Okay. Yeah, definitely exciting things and I, I know tonight's the big chorus concert, that's where, you know, a couple of our, our members had to, to go for the intermediate. So definitely exciting things that are happening. We're going to be looking at the change order summaries as well. We'll be asking for the approval of the minutes from our April meeting. Dr. Lour, are there any communications or old business? Okay, we have a lot of personnel if we're looking at the entire 10-point section. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments, if you had a chance to review all of the different changes that are happening.
If I could just speak to items 10, 10.15 through 10.18, there are placeholders on there for open learning support positions here in the district. We will be, I'll be asking for a board member for this Friday to sit in on interviews from 8 till noon.
8 to noon.
8 to noon chat. So you can let Dr. Alter know if you're available to help do that. This is a very competitive certification right now and so we're diligently but also quickly moving through that process to get folks through there so that we can, so that we can hire them. So I know we screened today and I'm hearing we've had some really good candidates that folks have looked at, so it looks good at this particular point. So as we go through that, those placeholders will change with, with actual information from Monday, but I did want to get it on the agenda so there weren't any surprises next week.
And if, and if I may ask a question, I know that there are a lot of learning support positions that are open, but has there been any talk about adding autistic support, especially to like the upper elementary where a lot of the kids come from South that have to get there?
So we have been in conversations to talk about potentially adding, but this does not, these positions right here do not reflect any additions to current open positions, if that makes sense. So these are, these were positions that were either vacated through a resignation for retirement or through our first and second round of bidding process through the district.
But is there any thought given to perhaps adding an autistic support?
Yes, we have talked about it. We've talked about additional space, maybe at East Primary School that's not currently there right now. But it is, it is a numbers game of students who are in outside placements to see if there are students that we are able to bring back and service better here in their home school than sending, you know, than outsourcing that. But sometimes it's, it's a difficult conversation with parents who are very happy with where the children are placed, so it's really building that capacity here internally to do that.
Thank you very much. Looking from 11.1, all the way to, 11.18, we are looking at different service agreements and budgets, contracts.
11.1.
Yes.
The CTC budget is increasing 6.96%. We are responsible, how much of that?
So we are responsible for approximately 56 to 57% of that budget. And, and the reason being is we send the larger number of students to that facility.
But I mean, that's something we need to continue to fund, but it's really doing well. It's a shining star in our area for sure.
And Rick, if we are looking at 11.3, which is the proposed final budget, we are just voting to approve it, not voting on it tonight, on Monday?
So you're just voting for the proposed final, which basically, at this point in time, is, is a document that we have to submit to the state saying that we, we presented it to you and that we presented it in the format that PD requires us. And right now, as it measures being approved, it's an unbalanced budget.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, I was just sad that you are correct, and that's what I talked about earlier, that you have to have that on display, have that out there for 30 days, but it actually can change based on the board's decision in June when you actually pass the final budget.
Correct.
So there can't be modifications if the budget would come in from the state.
On 11.4, the file attachments, I know that we, as board members, can see that. Can the public also see those attachments that were on the screen? Okay.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that's visible for them too.
And Rick, on 11.16, I did not realize copy paper, is that expensive? That is, I don't ever buy it, so I don't know.
Yes, for the current year that we're in, we were paying $29 a case and it went up to, what is it, $32.01 cents? Yes, so 11% increase.
And again, I think revisiting what you said, there's some expenditures we cannot get rid of, which is paper. And then when you see big increases like that, it is kind of shocking.
Correct.
And then looking at 12.1, we're going to have the second reading of the policies that were, in the, reading of 624, the taxable fringe benefit, so we are going to ask to approve the second and final reading. We're also going to be asking to approve 13.1 through 13.3, which are the monthly bills. If you have a chance to review those. And then we have quite a few student activities and different coaches and trips and things, so 14.1 to 14.4.
I have a question on 14.1.
Yes.
With the coaches, if you look at the attachment, it had like a half sign written beside some of the names. What was the purpose of that?
So, yeah, so oftentimes, folks want to help with, with the team and they, they agree to split a salary. So that's, those two positions added together equals one, but they have agreed to take a half a salary and work together on that. So you'll also see that same thing appear on the non-athletic supplementals as well.
15, Curricula. 15, curriculum professional development. 15.1 will be the list of our graduates. So we're going to approve the list of 2025 graduates, which is really exciting. Looking at 16.1 through 16.4, those will be different construction updates and consultation. And now we are to 17, which is citizens' comments on non-agenda items. So during this portion of the meeting, you may make comments about non-agenda items. As written in district policy, all citizen comments are limited to three minutes. We request that your public comments focus on issues or policies and not people. Please state your name, community in which you reside, and the agenda, and then, no, no agenda item. We need to take that out. First person that we have, I'm so sorry, I can see your first name, it looks like Gregory.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Hello, I'm Gregory Kissel from Allegheny Township. And I have a couple of concerns to express to you guys. My daughter came home from school, she goes to the upper. She's presently in fifth grade. And she basically said that they're not going to have any of their families next year. So I don't know if you're able to answer or discuss that, but like that, I'm concerned because, you know, is that going to affect class size or loss of instruction time in certain classes?
So we usually take all comments that you may have, and then if we're able to respond, then we try to respond after everyone's finished.
Okay.
If you have anything else? Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Stephanie Jankowski.
Hi, everybody, I'm Stephanie Jankowski. Yes, Zach is my husband. We reside in Allegheny Township as well. Mr. Kissel and I did not know the other was going to be here, but we're here for the same reason. My child is also in fifth grade at the upper, came home in tears saying the families are gone. I'm not buying a fifth grader's, you know, gossip. But then I did reach out and I started asking questions. I understand that some of this stuff cannot be discussed tonight. So all I wanted to do was state my claim that the families are working. We did away with them a few years ago, only to then reinstate them. I'm assuming because we realized the value in them. I would be curious to learn if, in fact, we are dismantling them again, why? I think that there is inherent value in the continuity that they provide the kids, their educational experience, the teachers' instructional experience. I just, I think that they're making sense right now. So to change something that seems to be working was concerning. But again, a fifth grader told me this. The other piece is that the COVID kindergarteners are incoming. And so my concern then would be, are we going to change something that's working? And then these already vulnerable learners are coming up. And then what happens, you know, when they're in need of the extra support, staffing, whatever? But no questions, all just to say thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And also I'm leaving because my daughter's at the chorus concert, so if we discuss, I appreciate it, but I'm out.
Okay, so I do want to, I do feel like I can address some of those concerns. But Dr. Rolland and I, and really the admin team have been pretty intimately involved in that schedule. So if we could just talk about the family structure, Chad, if you'd have a problem.
Yeah, and again, the intention is not to remove families from the concept. It is to make some adjustments because of instructional time. So the math and ELA will be more instructional time, and they will be able to be organized in families. The, there will be one potential family that shares science and social studies. And again, there's a lot of things that still need to be decided in the details. And what we're doing now is letting the teachers get a hold of that schedule and look at some of those things to say, hey, how is this going to dovetail, how is this going to work? So the, and again, it would be news to me that the families are getting eliminated. I'm not going to say they're not getting adjusted and they're not going to change, but the philosophy behind them is going to be there. And like I said, you know, especially with math and ELA. Math and ELA will be increasing their instructional time. And as far as class sizes, the average class size will be 20. Actually, not even the average, the high will be 20. I think in specials, they may be 23, 24, you know, based on that, which are super, super good numbers. You know, and again, the schedule changed for a couple of different reasons. One is, you know, is staffing and adjustment in staffing according to enrollment. I believe there are 140 students down in the last five years, BJ, I think we had that chart. You know.
It's 114 since 2020.
Yeah, so since 2020, there's 114 less students. So that staff has not changed number-wise. With some retirements, we're able to actually, you know, right-size that staffing. And again, the idea and concept is to do that while offering more opportunities for students, not less. Again, doesn't mean there's not change. And I think what's happening is it's changed, so people are hitting the panic button a little bit because I don't know that they fully understand the change yet. And again, I appreciate you saying from a fifth grader, because they, again, they probably are in panic mode because they're hearing things, and it's human nature. You know, teachers go into panic mode, and rightfully so. Something that they've known for the last four or five years is changing, and they're asked to look at something that is a little different than what it has been in the past. And I think that causes a little bit of a ripple effect. But right now, the staff is going to be charged with figuring out the details of some of the, there's the sharing that needs to go on with science and social studies. It's not really in the ELA and math, because ELA and math are staying relatively the same number of teachers as far as that's concerned.
Students are going to see very little change really to their day. It's really not a student impact. It's going to be, as a matter of fact, there's going to be two periods of intervention and extension period built into the day to address your concerns about COVID. Whereas right now, it's what, one intervention extension? So those children in intervention extension, they'll be shared with their math teacher, and their ELA teacher will switch to have access to students. So right now, and in some of the areas where we've had difficulty with that extra help period was that you had three or four different subject teachers competing for the same student at the same time. This is going to eliminate that problem where those ELA teachers are going to have 100% access to the students they need for extra support. And opposite, those math teachers, and the same with the science and social studies. So the kids are still teamed, there's going to be a little bit of shift with the science and social studies teacher, but that's going to remain.
And in our recent situation even with the instructional minutes and calculating the instructional minutes, the upper elementary was the lowest instructional minutes in, you know, in the district. Which, when we looked at the new schedule, the new schedule will address more, there will be more, you know, instructional minutes in the school day, you know, to be able to compensate for that. It'll be more consistent with the other elementary schools' timing. So it actually increased instructional minutes. And again, the other thing we have to remember about any schedule, when we went through it at the high school, we said it, we'll say it again, schedules adjust and change. And certainly, this is a bigger change. We will be working with teachers to get this up and running. We'll be reviewing it, making small adjustments to address some of the needs. But again, some of the advantages are, you know, again, the more targeted intervention, increase instructional time. And again, there's still a family concept. It is certainly not throwing out the families. And, you know, we'll follow up with the principal there as well to make sure that that message is being delivered accurately so that we're all working off the same sheet of music.
So to the point of the instructional time, which, as you guys know, with three days closed because of the storm, we're reporting our instructional hours to PDE and a little over 180 days. So we'll report 177 days. The minimum threshold of hours for elementary is 900 hours per year of instruction, where the high school level, the secondary level, is 990 hours. And when I ran those calculations, again, we were well on our way in the schedule process at that point, but it just added another why to why we needed to make the change. We were at 919.5 hours at the upper elementary school roughly. And the other K to four buildings, we were approximately 92 hours greater than that. And so this is going to help, you know, kind of equalize that and give our students more opportunity and more time in the classroom to, you know, to take advantage of, to be quite honest with you. So that's, those are some of the driving forces behind the schedule change.
Okay, so in closing, we will go around for director's comments. Mrs. Melanger.
I just wanted to say congratulations to our unified track team. They had their home meet tonight. From what I heard, they took second place. So kudos to them.
I have a question, not a comment.
Yes.
Can you give us clarification on the new vending machines at the high school? If a student gets a free breakfast and lunch, can they get a free meal or snack out of there at the end of the day?
Correct, yes, with their PIN number.
So they don't need a card?
You mean like a procure?
Like just put in a card?
No, they, no.
Has this been relayed to the students so they know?
The machine just came in yesterday, I think it was yesterday.
Oh, okay.
Or Monday, maybe. It has not been totally.
So if they're an after-school activity, they can get?
Yes, they can go in there and get a full meal.
A healthy snack?
Because the purpose of those machines is that we get reimbursement through the federal government for those meals. So it is the same as, yes.
Okay.
It's an after-school snack or meal or whatever.
Thank you.
I have one comment, and then I do have questions. My comment is the show choir performed last night, and they did an amazing job. So congrats to all the show choir members, they look great on stage. And then I have two questions. When we were talking about the Kisske area education foundation, you had mentioned that they were bringing on additional board members. Are their meetings open to public? Will they ever be open to public?
So the meetings were, the education foundation is required to hold one open public meeting a year, and that's for that. But we, what we decided was that there was a meeting that was held, or very last meeting, was open to the public, and that was pushed out in our ties so people could come and be part of that. So two meetings a year, and we're evaluating that and evaluating the participation to see that if we can increase those meetings to, you know, to have it in public. But they don't have to, as a 501(c)(3), they don't have to operate in the sunshine. But I mean, everything that we're doing is either posted on Facebook or, you know, reported out through here. I mean, I wish you'd say everything, but what I can remember, you know, we post out, and then Dawn can give the report to moving forward and keep you posted on those public meetings.
And that was my then, follow-up question to that was, if they are a 501(c)(3), are their scholarships and funding available, the information available to the public as far as their records go? What, because the public is contributing to their funding, it's through donations in the public. Like, are we able to view where this money is then being placed or given? Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
I see your question.
Do you know what I'm saying? This is a nonprofit.
Yeah, it's interesting, I'm going to take a look at that just because it is nonprofit, but it is, the way that it's funded is what I'm hearing. But they're also getting those private donations. So I'd almost have to take a look at the bylaws of the education foundation itself to see what that is. But it's a good question about the information that they're asking for.
Yeah, I can get your copy out, you can get that. The scholarships and all that, I mean, that's all announced in terms of, you know, publicly on Facebook. I don't know.
That's, I could take a look.
Okay, good question.
And then, sorry, one more question. When you spoke about the donations, the comment was for the wrestling room project. But if I recall, it wasn't a wrestling room project, it was the Chuck Terzky multi-function room.
Right.
And I just want some clarification on the purpose of that room?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, the Chuck Terzky Training Center walked down there today because I was, you know, looking at space. So that, even though they're raising money for that particular area, right, to give that up, that is a, you know, turnover to the Kisske area school district. We talked today about, you know, when it's not in use with, you know, certain scheduled things like that would be absolutely open channels.
Yeah, from the beginning of the project, it was to be re-imaging that space. And part of that is, you know, cheerleading obviously uses a piece of that space. In the past, there was a curtain that came down, and the cheerleaders would be over here, and the junior wrestlers would be over here, and then the junior Olympic wrestlers would come in at night, and there would be a curtain. Instead of a curtain, there's now going to be a full wall. And what we had talked about at the time, and this is maybe a year ago when it was approved, we had talked about that being the dedicated space then for cheerleading and for Friday Night Football, the visiting team. That is where they would be changing to, you know, to, for football games. Because that's where they do it now, right? And then they use the swim walk rooms for, you know, for showering and things of that nature. So it has followed the plan pretty precisely of it being a universal space. Certainly, any wrestling room during the school day is used. I know the one currently, the current wrestling room is used for yoga classes and things of that nature, you know, when they take the kids up there. You know, that's still going to be part of the school district property, and it will be able to be used at, you know, and again, there will be regulations because obviously skin disease and things of that nature, we don't want to make sure, we don't want to be introducing anything to that. But the dedicating, you know, just the dedicated space for cheerleading has been something that has been a long sought-out thing. And again, I know this year, we've had some issues because we have the junior high down there, and we're running out of space. So I know we had some issues with the atrium that we were working through. But again, that space will be now dedicated for cheerleading as well as the wrestling room space. So that is looked at as a training center. It was very purposeful to not be called the wrestling center. It is a training center, and it will be able to be utilized by all. But again, I know, like, and we walked down there today, I was actually curious, like, where did the wall end up compared to where the partition, because that was supposed to align? I think it's a foot, a foot and a half to where the curtain used to be. And now it's going to be an insulated wall. And having been in there when they're having cheerleading practice and been in there when they're having wrestling practice, I think both groups will appreciate the fact that they're not separated by a curtain, but now they're separated by a insulated wall. And the mats will be able to stay permanently down. I know that was one exciting thing that our cheerleading coaches were excited about because as it is now, they got to get the mats out of the shed and bring them into the space because they need to be rolled up. They will not have to be rolled up now. The only time that our custodians would be able to roll them up is for the home Friday Night Football games, when that space is going to be used for the visiting team. But other than that, it'll be a dedicated space where those mats will be able to stay down in place. And, you know, we talked, I know Jake Nolf is working on lettering and, you know, imaging and doing some wraps and things like that to make it something special for all groups.
So then the cheerleaders won't be displaced to upper?
No, the conversation of them being displaced, I think some wires got crossed. The only conversation about them moving to upper was to solve a problem about the atrium. Because, and again, traditionally, to my knowledge, they very rarely practiced all levels together. This year, they started practicing all years, all levels together. They were in the atrium, that posed even more of a problem because the atrium was already reducing in size, and then all of them were practicing together. Obviously, we're busting at the seams a little bit because we have two, you know, two buildings in one. That solution of the upper was presented as an option while we are hosting the junior high. Under no circumstances was it ever discussed that the cheerleading program would be displaced to upper long term.
I think Jake had mentioned that in a meeting, and I think it's just a matter of getting him caught up to speed in terms of like what.
Because again, Jake wasn't around even for the plans that were made last year when this whole thing was being approved. And even the drawings on the wall, there's, if you go down there now, there's a hallway. The drawings that are posted on the wall that they're using for the construction, like, it partitions it off. And I actually think it says visiting locker room and slash locker room area slash cheerleading, like, you know, on the drawing. It has always been the case to do that. And again, we do have some transition with the cheerleading coach, you know, so that, I think, is not helping the situation because that is something that she was absolutely looped in on and provided input on.
Sorry, one more, one more question, I'll get off of it. But I know that, you know, just wrestling in general, I mean, we're blessed to have such, you know, a huge team, from the junior wrestlers all the way up to junior high to high school, and now two girls. So with that being such a large crowd, I think that's what the concern, you know, in the community is with that being such a large crowd in that space, it feels like a wrestling space because that's a lot of kids that are doing that one sport. So I think that's why we were just asking those questions.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that, you know, the branding, the right words are being used in the branding. Because not just, you know, I'm not calling you out because you made a comment, you call it wrestling project.
You know, I'm thinking of, you know, Mr. Heater, and, you know, that's my mindset.
Yes, no, I understand. Because other, I've also heard, like, in the public, people saying the new wrestling room. I just want to make sure the branding is right to the space and that we're calling it the right words so that people don't feel like they're being pushed out of the space.
And I think the other thing that does muddy the waters there in the public is the wrestling program raised $250,000 to build that space. But from the beginning, But from the beginning, our end has been clear that that space is, you know, $250,000 is going in there from the wrestling program, but that space is going to be something that is able to be used by others, and it's allowing, it's able to give us some dedicated space for cheerleading.
And again, I've had to get myself schooled up, too. I mean, the only scheduling Mr. Nolf knows right now is having two additional grade levels in the building now. You know, I mean, that's his world right now, and you can probably, you know, test that. But, you know, the benefit for the district is, I mean, even just the HVAC system alone is going to take a lot of weight off of the HVA system that services the pool, which probably needs some repairs. So that space is not going to draw on that HVAC system for the pool. That's going to be for that auxiliary room space, where in the past, that, both of those areas were serviced by that. So that's brand-new equipment that's coming to the district, and it's, you know, there's definitely a benefit to that. And we haven't spent any district money on that. We have our architect done any time to do that. I think there was maybe some projects with Craig and his son to work on some of that, so. And it is being built to district specifications, not just having people throw walls up. And again, next week, when we have a tour of the intermediate school, we can carve some time as it moves a little bit further along down there, and take you guys down there. All the plans are on the wall, and we can.
The support from the public has been amazing. I mean, you know, there was a donor, they matched $125,000, so, you know, when the wrestling program got $125,000, they had a match of $125,000 bucks. So that, some of the work is being done by companies that are donating their time and their energy to get that done. So it's a bigger project than, you know, probably what we even realized at first, but the community's rallying together to get it done, and I couldn't agree more that the branding is important. I know, and again, to that point, we had a conversation about, you know, the labeling of it on the outside of the building to direct people to where things go on in the evenings, where most of our stuff happened, it happens in the back of that building. So we've had conversations about waiting until it's done, and then really taking a look at globally, how do we need to label things across the district, so that people know where to go when they're entering their campus?
Well, that was part of our school safety, the signage. The other piece, too, and again, you brought up the foundation, which is a good point, so the original ask from that particular group, I believe, was upwards of $25,000 or $30,000, and I think that ask came in probably nine months ago, 10 months ago, Mr. Heater presented. At that time, the answer from the foundation was, continue your fundraising efforts and see where that goes, and then that number went from either $25,000 or $30,000 down to 15, because there were some changes in the HVAC, there's, with the insulation on the HVAC that needed to be upgraded, which was a higher cost than what was originally specified in space, and that money was taken out of the Jeff McAfee's fund. He graciously left a part of his estate to the foundation, so that was moved out of the.
Yeah, it was not part of the operating expense, part of the foundation money. It was a donation of $200,000.
On you. John? That's you, you're John.
I guess you're last. I want to thank Mr. Liberto, did a great job on briefing us on the budget. I appreciate that. I'm glad we had a public comment on the taxes, how much they were. We got that out there. I have a good understanding. Now, the one thing that Mr. Liberto mentioned was maintenance of the buildings. There has been some comments made to me personally, which I don't mind, I appreciate, is do we have a list of priorities for all the schools, all six schools? The answer is yes. Facility management falls under Rick, Mr. Liberto, I'm sorry. And they have created this list. Now, here's the problem. I got involved, okay? I added all these columns, such as life cycle of the PC equipment, when it was installed, the cost of replacement. I mean, there must be, what, 10 or 15 columns I have there. Those are not completed, and part of it is, first of all, finding the records to find out when a boiler was installed at a certain school, and what would the replacement price? We have to bring people in and give us their best estimates. So that list is well-developed, except for those columns I just described. So if people have questions, do we have a list of priorities? The answer is yes. Now, why I'm bringing that up is, you talked about zero in maintenance of our facilities. Now, since Rick has come on, it's been again, Mr. Liberto came on board, many people don't know this, but the funds, the loans, the funds we have have been invested in low-risk, secured investments, and he's earned, just this year, I believe, $1.1 million. So we're going to continue that approach of not only, when we borrow money, is make those smart choices, and then we see maybe next October, another loan possibly, and then the portion of that, a very small portion, maybe a third of it, going towards finishing the project, the intermediate project, and the remaining has to be spent in a three-year timeline. Taking that priority list of what all the buildings need, and assigning that money while it's earning interest, building that money up to hit the maintenance. The reason why we're in this spot, and I hate to say this, over many, many years in the past, we left our buildings go, and we are now dealing with that, the consequences, from parking lots to windows, et cetera. So I just want to compliment you on what you did with the budget.
Thank you.
And compliment you on asking those questions, and I wanted to make sure you know, while we have zero in maintenance, we're not happy with that, and I don't think anybody should be. So a small tax increase would help us address a little bit of that. So thank you.
Mr. Sterling?
I'm going to beat on the tax increase drum as well. So I say this every year, drives me crazy. Westmoreland County has not had a reassessment since 1972. If Westmoreland County did regular reassessments of properties, the school boards would never have to raise taxes. We wouldn't have to raise the rate, because the assessment on your houses would increase, you would pay more taxes throughout reassessment of your homes. Your homes would be more valuable. So your homes are still more valuable on the market, but as a reassessment, you saw the numbers up there, 15,000, 20,000, 25,000 are what the average assessments are in our school district. We all know that our houses are worth 10 times that. So, you know, we are stuck with the burden of raising taxes, and the inflation rate today is 2.3%. If you look at our expenses, the increase, it's much less than that, from 69.8 million to 70.4 million, that's about 1%. So, you know, we're really holding line on expenses, and I think these guys are doing their job, keeping expenses in check, keeping it below inflation. But that being said, in a perfect world, with 2.3% inflation, we would have to raise taxes 2.3% every year just to stay even. And by not raising taxes for several years, like we have done in the past, that puts us in a spot that we would have to make it up, and a little tax increase every year in line with inflation shouldn't really hurt, because everyone should be, their house values going up a little, their income's going up a little, but all the other expenses are going up a little as well. So we're just trying to, my feeling is, keep in line with inflation, and a little bit at a time, rather than those big increases every five years. So thank you for commenting tonight. That's all I have.
Dr. Laura?
Just to echo Mrs. Melinger's thing, the Unified Track Meet today was awesome. I didn't get to stay till the very end, but if you haven't gotten an opportunity to attend one of those, I really recommend that you do. The spirit of camaraderie and the level of competition is really, really something special, and it really does what it's designed to do, to bring our students together, regardless of, you know, of any challenges that they might have. So that was absolutely phenomenal today. And then, you know, echo what the kids still, I know that Mrs. Mather was down there running with our North Primary kiddos at the marathon, so we haven't had a chance to catch up because of, you know, with the Title I conference, but I'd like to take a look at those. So I really also appreciated the discussion tonight, and I really appreciated the questions and the input that everybody had, so I just thank you so much for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. First of all, I had some really good feedback from a community member talking to me about starting to bring our students and their accomplishments in here to us. We did this years ago. This is something Dr. Laura and I both want to do, get the kids back in here showing us what great things they're doing. And, you know, principals, you know, you do these beautiful reports, so maybe we can talk about how to get your kids in here and show them off, and let us see and interact with them. I think that would just be absolutely wonderful. I am thinking about the high school seniors. I'm sure that they are getting a little itchy to graduate, so, you know, definitely thinking about them. And I just want to echo, I appreciate every single person at this table, sincerely, administrators, board members, solicitor. I think we work very hard to have these discussions, try to listen to the public, to those feedback, to those comments, and just ask the questions. So for that, I'm very, very grateful to have, to work with a board that's, and administrators that are so wonderful. So with that being said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second? Okay, all in favor?